Special meeting of the North Grandford Town Council Thursday, November 5th, 2020. Board of Education is running at 9:00 PM at 6:00 PM. 6:00, 7:00 PM. Well, let's start with a salute to the flag.
The flag is in the United States of America and it is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Can everybody remain standing, please? I have something quick that I want to say, and then I think Marie has. Well, one of our council members has become ill, and I want to say from Tom Mancher and the entire council that our loving prayers go off to him, to Lou and his family. I think we all know what happened. Marie.
Thank you. I would just like to ask on behalf of the town council if we take a moment of silence to keep not only Lou, but his family, his wife, and his children, and the rest of his family and friends, who take a moment of silence.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Drew.
Here.
Councilor Lemon.
Here.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
Councilor Don Oster. Councilor Bucci.
Here.
All right. Next is discussion possible action on the high school building project.
Yeah, so it's just as broad as it could be for the council tonight to cover whatever you need to cover and wherever you want to take conversation with respect to the project and its label discussion and possible actions. So where do you want to go? And I know Rusty is present, staff, and members as well. So wherever you want to take the conversation. I think preparing the agenda for November 10th next week, we'll have unfinished business, same item under unfinished business, should something not be finalized tonight, that you could finalize on the 10th. But it's entirely, this was an opportunity to separate this from the regular agenda and all the other items, supposed to focus exclusively on this. Truly, where do you want to take it?
Okay. Well, I'm sure people have things to say, questions to ask Rusty's here. So everybody wants to start?
I'd like to ask Rusty. Rusty, how much time do you need between a vote from the town council and what you have to do at a present of the state?
Well, I started working on that because we had to prepare documents for the Board of Education, early education, public meetings, and some modifications. So we started writing on that and actually got approval on those documents. So at this point, once the council gives the authorization, then we have to go through and file the application itself. So roughly, I think we can get it done next week.
You have to do it next, you have to get it done next week for a second.
Right. So I think the goal is to try to file the application on Tuesday, just because, even though I sent emails to the state to say, is there anything else that you need, that outlined everything that we're supposed to provide them? You know, you can tell if somebody else comes up. So by filing the application on Tuesday, I think it gives us plenty of time. I think in the conversation, the 15th was given as like a sort of adopted, I suppose, coming from the council.
All right. To move into further discussion, I'll move the amended resolution for the North Grandford High School project. Be it hereby resolved that the town council, when the resolution passed on June 29th, 2020, unauthorized North Grandford Board of Education apply that the Commissioner of Administrative Services accept or reject a grant for a build new option six project at North Grandford High School. Be it further resolved that Anhack Design Review Committee slash Town Council is designed as a building committee with regard to the building new option six project at North Grandford High School. And be it further resolved that North Grandford Town Council hereby authorize that lease preparations or schematic lines and outline specifications were built as new option six project at North Grandford High School after the council makes final determination of the scope of the project no later than November 15th, 2020. Be it further resolved that this sum of $4,242,390 be added to the funding resolution approved for $62 million on June 29th, 2020 to make total appropriations up to $66,242,390 through the issuance of bonds to fund the build new option six project.
Second.
So, also do we make motion? Ian, make your protest.
Hit one, doesn't matter.
Let me wait three seconds. Councilor Ryan. Okay, discussion?
So Rusty, I just have a question for clarification. So on the conversation with the state on October 27th, you had asked the question about if we delayed voting on the project and waited until next year, our reimbursement rate would go up. And Michelle from the office said that was not entirely true, that they were going to grant us a one-year extension if we needed it. And the only way that it would reduce, my understanding was, the way it would get reduced is if the appropriation amount was for more than what our original appropriation amount was for. She gave the example of 60 million, and then it's 100 million. So when you vote for that additional 40 million, so whenever that vote occurs for the additional 40 million, that's the date that they would go by. So if that was after the date, then yes, the reimbursement rate would go down based on that information. But if our appropriation stayed at the same level of our original resolution, it would not change at all.
So my experience, I don't know if I prefer that example. My experience with the state is if you change the amount after they approve appropriations, so if it's been approved, right now, they still accepting modifications for all applications. So it's going to have this different information needed. So in our case, that 4 million of additional dollars would be amended at the same reimbursement rate as you currently have. It would not affect that.
Correct. But if we didn't vote now and moved it forward, because that was the question.
Right.
If we didn't, and we waited until next year to vote on it, that, and if the appropriation amount was changed, then yes, it would affect the reimbursement rate. If it was not changed, they were going to give us another year.
At the same rate, yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, that's what I understood, and I think that's what Marie understood.
Right. Her exact words were, reimbursement rate is dependent on when the district paid the funding. If we are still using the funding date of June and still using that money, if the rate does not change.
Correct.
That was her exact.
Correct. But if we changed, if we voted, delayed the vote, and went with option six, because we have to increase the funding for it, that would decrease the, if we did vote on it now.
So in light of that, that's the question we've asked, at least I know that I've asked this whole, this whole project. And the answers I received were, it could be zero. If, the question was, what happens if we didn't approve the vote on November 15th? The answers I've gotten during these sessions, I've asked that, is anything from zero to less two, some, plus, two plus million, and I don't know. So when she said that, that's a very important piece of information, to know that we've basically set a placeholder. And the way I'm viewing this is, we're about to spend an enormous amount of money. And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm just kind of summing it up. We want to spend 66 million on the school, 7.5 million on the lease department, 5 million on communications. So add all that up, I believe we should be putting that in the paper, informing the citizens that based on the numbers you're given, our taxes are, pendle up about 8.5% annual. So we should at least give the people, the information, the citizens, all this information, and let them, let them speak to us. We have the opportunity, we have the placeholder, we have the time to figure out how we can do some sort of a referendum, or whatever, whatever it may be. But I think that's pretty important.
Is Vin on the line? Can he?
Yes.
So just, I don't know if he can hear me, but I know I had asked him months ago about referendums, and if according to our charter, we could do a referendum for any of the building projects, and I thought the answer was no. So I just want to see if that can be clarified.
Vin, I don't know if you've heard me hear the question, but it's about, the question on whether or not the council has the ability or the authority to send this item to a referendum based on our charter. High school project or any other project? You're muted, so you have that mute.
I think, yeah, and Rosa just said that, I think that the answer is yes, and then there's no language to, I think, the way I remember reading it was that you could be petitioned by the, by the residents to the council, I think, but I don't think the council can directly send to referendum.
I can't hear. I don't know if anybody else can hear either.
For the benefit of everybody here, Mike, you probably want to just repeat whatever he says.
Yeah.
All right. How are references under C-412?
I'm just going to hop in that, if they can't hear you, so I'm going to have to break it up into small pieces, but if you're doing C-4 of the charter.
And for that, the electors shall have the power to approve or reject at a referendum as herein provided any ordinance or other measure passed by the council.
Right. So let me pause there. Yeah, so as I said, the electors have the ability to, you know, to act on or take that on any, any item ordinance that the council passes or approves, that they could take that to a referendum, but not, it appears, apparently not on their own. The council can't send it on their own.
There's nothing, there's, you're right, there is nothing in C-412, it's in the ordinance, in that it does not state the council may refer to referendum. But it says the electors shall have the power to approve or reject, and the process by which they would do that is laid out in the, which is.
Petition.
Petition, probably like a quick.
Right. So the electorate can petition the council after you, after you take action on, let's say you propose and put forth an ordinance that the community doesn't, electorate doesn't like, they can then petition the council to put that item on a referendum. So, I mean.
So within 10 days, so within 10 days of an eight measure, which is subject to referendum. Okay, so this will be subject to referendum because it's not one of the five items that is articulated in the N. You could get a petition signed by at least 5% of the legislature to approve that referendum.
So how does that apply to when you do a referendum for the budget, where we might have a tax increase in due case?
Yeah, I think, well, the question is from Deputy Mayor Zampano about how does that differ from the language for the budget in which we send that to referendum? And I think it's because the language is specific in the charter as well around our budget process.
What the reason is?
It's, it's.
Yes. So we have to, I mean, the only point I'm making is that for us to just do this without any input from the, you know, the citizens as a whole, I mean, we're talking an 8.5% increase.
So, yeah, so.
I mean, that's not small.
Yeah. So there's, Thomas, it's just indicating the importance of the weight and magnitude of the decision. So short of a referendum, the council still would have the ability to do a public hearing or public informational meeting? They just couldn't do, under the charter, a binding referendum or non-binding referendum?
They don't have the power to refer to referendum purely. Under, under C-8-5, that section of the charter is the power of referendum on the budget. So that, the budget is specifically part of having to be a referendum. The power of referendum in general is vested in the electorate, not the town council. The town council is not able to get a power to refer anything to the referendum, whether it be binding or not.
So my next question would be, how do you get this information through the town council?
Me or to him? I mean, it's a.
It's a.
Any.
Me is pretty significant.
Okay, I have a question. When we had that presentation in the cafeteria, was that considered a public hearing? Well, it wasn't a public hearing, I think it was the. It was just part of the budget. But it was open to the public, right, yeah, it was the presentation. So that wasn't a public hearing?
Could we put something into a talk at times, like, pop the age of a talk at times, and have a date, and everybody like to come?
Well, it's.
If only I had 10 days to organize 5% of the electorate, it's not an easy undertaking. I'm just expressing some concern, when I look at, you know, our current tax rate is 33.58, and based on the information we've been given, we're looking at possibly 36.43. And then we look at our surrounding towns, anyone that type, I'm going to do, I listed all the ones that touch our town, 28, 32, I'm not going to read the whole number, 28, 32, 35, 34, 329. So my point, you know, there is, you know, we talk about home values and maintaining our home values, and this is, this is, I think, I think that the citizens need to weigh in. Because this is going to affect everybody, every household in this town, not just who's sitting here, or, you know, I mean, that's pretty significant. That's just, this is my opinion, I'm not saying we should do so or shouldn't, I'm just pointing this out, this is, I'm pointing out the value, the liability.
I would say that we've heard from, how many people signed that petition? Do you remember, Mike?
More than 600, 635, 75, well, some.
I guess, Michael, my point would be that we've had petitions, we've had letters, it's been, I don't go on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, but my understanding is that on Facebook, I'm sure people talk about it throughout town. I can't believe that the majority of the public in this town doesn't know right now we're considering a new high school.
But they don't understand the numbers, do they?
But, Michael, those numbers, high school numbers won't take effect for three years. And there's a drop. So just scare somebody and say your tax is going up 8%, there are things just going up 8% tomorrow, it's not going up 8% tomorrow, we're three years down the road.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
And your, and your debt service is dropping off significantly in three years. And then another two years after that, it really drops off. So in five years, your debt service is way down. So you're not giving a true picture of it going up 8%. Because it's not going up 8%.
Well, and look, it is, it is.
Yeah, but then it's dropping on the backside.
On a $300,000 home, we were told that it's going to pick up approximately $600.
We don't know if those numbers are exact.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying approximately that. I'm just, all I'm pointing out is that it just takes that, that's all the information we have, we don't have any other information. And we look at that, any way you calculate it, it's 8.5%. If, if, numbers don't lie, you know, they're, they're true. So, Mike, and then the other thing I have to keep track, keep, keep in mind is that business doesn't stop. The police cars, the fire engines, whatever, the business doesn't stop, it's going to continue. And again, I'm not saying not to do it or to do it, I'm just pointing out a concern, trying to get this information through the citizens that we represent. And I think that's important. And, and on the other point is that we've never had this information that the Shell gets and pointed out to us on that call, that we do not lose the reduction, sorry, we go to the rebate or funding for the state, we do not lose it, she made a point of that.
Well, we don't lose it only if we stay at the 62 million. So, and, and the option that was presented to us, the new bill is at 66, a little over 66 million. So if we went with the option six, but said, oh, I'm sorry, you can only have 62 million of it, then yes, it would not drop. But those aren't the numbers that are being presented to the state. The state is getting the 66 million, and it, so then it would be reduced because we're changing our funding. Isn't there also a problem in terms of enrollment? How long goes down to the next one? It isn't?
No. She said that if you vote by June, past June, they will place that.
Only if you keep that number, only if you keep the 62 million.
She said, if I may, the other thing you need to consider is everything that's been budgeted is, and that's a budgeted one year out. So the one-year delay is $2.6 million more, so you wouldn't be looking at 66 million at that time, you'd be looking at something 69 million, because it's simply going to change. So it's 2.6 on top of what you're budgeting now. So just keep that in mind when you're, when you're talking about pushing it off right here. What they did say is that they would hold the reimbursement rate, because ideally, if you had a new application going, if you just didn't, I think you'll have to come to some resolution on the application. What they can do is when you make an application and they're setting the priority list, they can say, okay, if you're not doing it for it right now, we can put it in next year's priority list. And what they were suggesting is that they would hold the reimbursement rate, because if you were applying for next year, it would have a 2.7%.
Right, that, right.
And so she said that they would evaluate to do that, because it's for expenditure for a year. But on your end, you'd have to add the 2.6 million, because everything right now is estimated for, you know, starting each year next year.
Mike, was there a benefit for bundling all the markets together?
Well, it gives us a better sense in terms of what our, and then to Mike's point, structuring the, you know, payment and entering into the market as, at one time versus multiple time or over multiple years, yeah. We can, you know, fund each year. We'll have to issue short-term bond anticipation notes with, you know, with the projects as they come, because they're not all C-20s, all the other, they could be, I mean, one big, if the council's ready to move, but yeah, I think there, there is a issue of speeds that we've got to look at, and costs of going into the market, and one, probably do it only, only once. Let's just save one.
We went up the same hill years and years ago. I was on the council, we did intermediate school, we did libraries, we bought the auto property. And we didn't, we didn't exactly know how we were going to pay for it all, but we did. And it was some of the best moves that we got on page at that time. And now those, and those are just about expired for bonding and funding, and we're at it again, you know? If we don't do this, I can't see when we could do it again. No.
I just think there's so much more to, I think everybody's done a great job, the town council, with putting together the committee, committee did some work, board education worked hard. We all know that something has to be done. I, I mean, other than what Randy just said, you know, we're going to lose over 2 million if we wait, if we don't bond, if we don't bond all at the same time, we could, we could hurt ourselves there as well. The rates are low right now, our bond rating is good right now.
I think we've, from the time this was all presented to us, which Rusty made his first presentation at the end of February, and with all of the various meetings between the Board of Ed, the Town Council, joint meetings, and, and having information out there, I think we've covered our bases. And without the public, you know, at this point, if they wanted it to go to referendum, if there was, depending on how the vote goes, and, and they decide one way or the other that they want it to go to referendum, you know, they would still have that option, I don't know what that would do for the application if it goes into the state. But I think we've gotten, and we've asked a lot of the critical questions as far as breaking it out between, you know, not just an average house, but low, middle, high, we've gotten that, with the commercial real estate, what effect it has on the commercial businesses in town. And granted, these are all estimates to the best of their knowledge, based on the information that we have right now in regards to it. But I think we've done a good job of, of getting it, and you're always going to get information, you're always going to get people that'll say, I knew nothing about this. And there's nothing we can do about that, except just keep getting the information out there, and, you know, and I know that for some of them, going through this, yes, it probably will be difficult for them with the increase in their tax bill. And, but I look at it as something that needs to be done. Between the high school, the police department, communications, you know, I agree with Mike, I wasn't on the council years ago when they did all of the stuff that they did, but it just kind of gets worked in, and you just move along. And yes, business will continue, and I know that that increase in the debt service is not going to be the only increase in taxes. And there are years that it's going to be difficult in going through the budget and doing that. But I think it is time that, at this point in time, that something needs to be done. And between the two options that were presented, well, the three, because there was the maintain, but that wasn't part of the resolution that we voted on in June, so we found out that if that was the option we were going to go, then yes, we would have to delay the project because we'd have to submit a whole new application for that. And that would delay it a year, and there's very minimal things that would qualify to get reimbursed on that project. And just in looking at the numbers, when I see the numbers that have to get to maintain, and basically it's a facelift to the school, and yes, you do the windows, and you upgrade heating, and all of that stuff, but to put that kind of money, and there's a lot of unknowns in that, and basically for $20 million more, you can build a brand-new school. So when I look at it from a business sense, that 20 million to do a facelift and to improve those things, and you're going to bond for 20 years, you're still going to, that bond is still going to be there, and you're still going to have to address the issues. And from a business sense, for me personally, that's not a good decision, that you're going to put in 20, still be paying off on it, and now you have to go and do something else, and start all over, when you could just. So we found out that if that was the option we were going to go, then yes, we would have to delay the project because we'd have to submit a whole new application for that. And that would delay it a year. And there's very minimal, um, things that would qualify to get reimbursed on that project. Um, and just in looking at the numbers, when I see the numbers that have to get to maintain and basically it's a facelift to the school and yes, you do the windows and you upgrade heating and all of that stuff, but to put that kind of money and there's a lot of unknowns in that, and basically for $20 million more, you can build a brand new school. So when I look at it from a business sense, that 20 million to do a facelift and to improve those things and you're going to bond for 20 years, you're still going to, that bond is still going to be there and you're still going to have to address the issues. And from a business sense, for me personally, that's not a good decision that you're going to put in 20, still be paying off on it, and now you have to go and do something else and start all over when you could just do it all right from the beginning. So.
And just to your point too, this is the part that, that scared me about that option is that, you know, we say 20 million now, but anybody who's done rehab house to their, you know, rehab to their house, as soon as you start opening the walls and you find this, that, and the other thing.
It could easily grow.
Really quick.
Yes.
And so, you know, it might end up being, you know, close to 10 million. And then now you're saying for 10 million, you get a whole new school that you know you're good. You don't have any, any surprises five years down the road, eight years down the road. And like you said, for the most part, that, that's just a facelift. And the new school, you're talking about having technology in the classrooms, having, you know, proper, um, wiring for computers and what I'm sure wifi for internet, you know, you're, you have a tough debate school to move forward with.
That's, that's another. Sorry. That's another major reason that we want the ad hoc committee from the council to be the building committee because last school, intermediate school stuff slipped by, stuff we expressed concerns about, didn't get addressed. And if we have the expertise on the council and the ad hoc committee, I don't foresee any problems. I don't foresee any corrections. I, I foresee a building that we'll all be proud of and it'll be here for 50, 50 years. So that's, that's my reason for pushing forward tonight.
You know, if I could use an educational metaphor, I think we've done our homework. I think the council did the right thing by having the ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee realizing that the first site wasn't correct. So now it's time for the test. And the test is this, one question. Do we want a facility, a school building, that's going to support teaching and learning in this town? And I hope the answer is yes, because I think it's time. I've got enough time on the ad hoc committee to see what would have to be done to renovate that building. And it's far beyond any control that we could really fix it to the degree it would have to be fixed. So I firmly believe that the answer to the question is yes, we need a new facility for the kids and the teachers in this town. That facility will support teaching and learning. And I think it's up to, who says to do it?
My, my question is, do, do we not want to, again, do we not want to communicate with the citizens? I'm not saying to do it or not to do it. Don't misunderstand me. So do we want to inform the citizens?
So here's the thing. I think the, the people who want to be informed are informed. We got a ton of letters from people. We got people that came out and spoke to us. There's been, people have put things.
78.
People, people have put things in the paper, right? So they, so if people are reading the paper, if the people that you say you want to reach are reading the paper, then they've already seen those letters and opinions that people put in there. So they should already be aware that something's going on with the project.
But there's a financial impact. That's my point.
Of course there is a financial impact.
Well, but yeah, you say of course, but the, I mean, people sitting here don't, don't want, don't have this laid out.
The, um, so the people that, the people that voted for me put their faith in me that I represent well. And I haven't gotten anybody, well, I haven't had any call yet to say, Mike, we don't want a new high school. Vote against it. I haven't got a long call, say that. So I got a lot of calls and say, we need a new school. We desperately need a new school. And that, that was, that was one of the reasons we moved this resolution down.
I mean, it comes up, what did we say it came up to, like 40 bucks a month?
Well, it, so the information that we got at the October 20th, where they broke it down between the three levels, so of course, you know, in the beginning years, it's a lower rate and then the annual increase, and then it, it does build through the middle and then it starts coming down again. So there is an average cost per year, um, for each of the scenarios, low, middle, and higher on the, on the homes. So just on, on all three projects, adding them together, um, so on the A house, which is the lower level house, the average over the life of the 20-year bond is $372. On the B level house, which is the mid-level, is $503. And the higher level is $678, which is the average over the 20 years. So of course you have some high years and then lower years. And that's all three projects, high school, police station, and communications.
Right. So if we, if we go with the average, the median household, you're talking $42 a month. I think for $42 a month, to give our kids a new high school, that's a quality high school, I mean, just to add hot committee, get a phenomenal job, moving it and the new design and everything else like that.
Well, it's not just the high school. It's the police station and communications too, but.
The bulk.
The bulk is the high school. It is.
Um, $42 a month?
Let's take what we see.
Okay.
What we're clearly aware of is we've got a facility that can only be characterized as appalling. We're sending kids to school in a place that I think a lot of communities would want condemned. So that we do nothing is not an option. We must do something, which means there is going to be some sort of expenditure. We have clearly gotten an indication from a segment of our community that are strongly in support of replacing this facility with a new building. I suspect, though I don't know, that those are people that are intimately involved largely with the school system, that are either young parents, we anticipate are going to have children in high school, people who have children in there now and are very concerned with the conditions their children are learning under. We've not had any real vocal or letters or opposition that I'm aware of to any significant degree. In fact, as I sit here, I can't think of a single person that's come forward and said, don't do this. That's not to delegitimize the question that Tommy raises tonight, which is, have we adequately advised the public of the expenditure we're about to undertake and the impact it's going to have on them as a member of our community? And maybe we've been somewhat remiss in that regard. I suspect, again, purely a suspicion, that no matter what we do to make people aware of this project and its cause, there will be people that will ignore it until they get their first tax bill. Three years from now, say, hey, what the, did you guys do? And I think that's the price you pay for the glory of sitting here. You're going to get that. From my perspective, I can't disagree with anything I heard from you. I think putting a Band-Aid on a 60-year-old building that's clearly outdated, that has been used to the nth degree, is probably a waste of a good Band-Aid. Renovating is new. We've been down that road and sorely disappointed by it. And that might be a reflection on either the construction people who are involved in that project, the design people that are involved in that project, or the town simply looking the other way while their money was going out the back door. I don't know, but I do know that that's not a project I want to repeat. So when I look at this project, I think it compels me to come to the conclusion that I've really only got one viable choice. And if that is an expenditure of a little bit more, maybe a lot more than I really want to spend, I think I'm forced to do that. And while I'd like to not impose this tax burden on the taxpayer and the public, myself and ourselves included, the reality is, I don't think there's any way around this. And if you're going to be part of the community, there is a cost. Our job is to contain and make sure that cost is a good investment for the public, that we're doing everything we can to keep the expenditure at its absolute minimum and to build a quality facility that'll serve our teachers and our children for the foreseeable future. I think we've done that. So, you know, I'd very much like to know if there was a way to give more information to the public and invite them to express their concerns or misgivings, or come out and adamantly oppose the project, because I'd like to hear that as well. I don't know that there is any way that you're going to get that information into everyone's hands, that they're going to pay attention to it, and they're going to respond to it. Just, this is an aside, years ago, I, I was on the county zoning commission, and a woman came forward and complained that we had approved a project on her street. And I was taken aback that this woman was disappointed. And I asked the town planner if we had properly sent out certified mail notices and received back the green cards. She said, yes. I said, could you go get them? She brought them out and we looked this woman's name and address up. I'll call her Mrs. Smith, 123 Main Street. And there was a card with a signature on it. And I said, Mrs. Smith, do you recognize this signature? She said, yeah, that's my signature. I said, you've got a certified mail notice before this was approved. She said, oh, I thought that was some sort of an ad I threw away. There's nothing you can do to help a person like that. If they're not going to read certified mail, you can't break down their door and scream at the top of your lungs, we're going to spend $60 million, you better come out and say something. So there's going to be some segment of the population you're never going to reach. And while I agree with your concerns, I think we've pretty much done what we have to do to make this a project that the public can and should be aware of. And the need, I think, is obvious. So I can vote in favor of this project and go home and not lose any sleep over.
Would that all call the question?
I agree with Mike. I have to agree with Joe, he just said, I agree 100% with what everybody's been saying here. Like you said, we were, we were liked by these people, you know, you're totally right, absolutely right, 100% right, I'm kicking them out there. I've been going through this, uh, in, in my barber shop 10 times a day, people coming in saying, you want this? People coming, senior citizens saying, I can't afford it. Uh, I'm torn between the whole thing. Uh, I think, I think what it boils down to, and I mean, you said, no, let the public know, I always wanted to get the public to know that. Uh, I think what it boils down to with me is giving these kids a safe, safe place to learn, a comfortable place to learn and, and it, it's all about the kids for me. That's what I'm concerned about. And they need, they need a school. They need a new school, as far as I can see. I can't see redoing the old one. I can't see. The only thing that makes any sense to me is the new one, like, like Rose said. Everybody made sense up here tonight. And I, uh, I'm with you. I gotta, and I hate to, I hate to see the senior citizens because I can't afford this. I hate it, breaks my heart. But I gotta go with what I think is right. And I agree with you, Joe. I think it's the right thing to do. I don't want to spend the money. I don't want to spend the money like that, especially for the people that don't even know me. But I think you're right.
Well, unfortunately, I can't support it. And the only reason why I can't support it is not laying it out to the public, the financial part of it. That's the only reason. And I have nothing to do with anything else. Because I know at least the people that have come and approached me, they basically told me that, just like what Mike said, they're, you're there to represent us. Well, that's what they're, they're, they're coming at me from the other angle. So my, my whole point was, we should, we should, I would like to lay this out as, as the, you know, the financial picture so that people can see it. And then, and then, and then, uh, that, that's why.
Those people see cable access TV, they see our meetings, they see the school board meetings, they see every freaking meeting there is. If they don't have a clue that we're building a new high school, they don't frigging belong in our town. They don't belong in our town. Because I tell you what, those frigging tapes are played whether you were at midnight, whether you were evenings, or whether you were days, they're always on the cable access TV. So I, listen, I can't, I feel for you, but I tell those frigging people, guess what? You missed the vote. We're building a new high school. Thank you. My question's on the table.
I just have one question in regards to the motion, a statement in the motion, and maybe Rusty can answer this. When it says here that we authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications, is that everything that you've presented to us, that's what's included in that?
Right.
Okay, so there's, so that's, the cost up to this point includes all of that right now?
If you, since it's an amendment to the writ of, a motion, that's what the writ of motion was for.
Okay.
That's why it's an amendment. That's, that's why I specifically sent it up to the council.
Well, that's, that was their suggestion in that phone conversation, is to get the motion up to them so that they can make sure the wording was correct.
Right.
Because this is our one shot at it, to get it right. So, okay.
I know I've spoke up many times, I think you all know how I feel about it. I don't think there's a person on this table here that knows that we don't have to do a lot to the school. And I've said it before, there's no doubt in my mind that our school could be saved, but it sounds like you guys are going a different way. But at the same time, there's no doubt in my mind, and it kind of, I have a little, I'll say I have a chip on my shoulder about it, is the fact that the school has been neglected. And it hasn't been neglected a little bit. It's been neglected a lot for a long time. And part of the reason it was neglected, and there's no doubt in my mind, is to get a new school. No doubt in my mind, the town council gave hundreds of thousands of dollars a couple of years ago to redo the bathrooms. The school did nothing with it, gave it back to the town council. The purpose of that was to make the school look better. The school hasn't been painted inside. Ceiling tiles haven't been changed. It is ridiculous and we all know it all has to be done. The bathrooms look like something from a prison. And we've, and I've spoke up and said that we have to do something with the bathrooms now, even if we're building a new school, because it's ridiculous. And the money that was given a few years ago to do those bathrooms, that means there's kids that just graduated that high school, that ridiculously neglected high school in North Branford. There's kids that graduated from there that went there for four years and were in those bathrooms and in those conditions, and it didn't need a lot of money. It did not need a lot of money to make it look better and still maybe go for a new school, but it was neglected on purpose. You can't tell me that they had the money to do those bathrooms over, to do work, and it was not used. What, what would, what would be the purpose of not doing it? What would be the purpose of giving, asking for that money, getting the money, and not doing it? So that, that's all I got to say about the school, but from my perspective, I'm for spending the money on the new police station, which is going to be at least seven and a half million. I'm for putting three to five million into communications, because I know we need that. And I'm for putting $20 million into the school. So I'm for only spending $33 million this year. That's all I want to spend is 33 million. Ballpark. The other choice is 75 million. We're not just talking the school, we're talking all this other stuff. We're talking $75 million in North Branford. $75 million. Now, like I said, when I say no to the new school, I'm saying no to that plan. That's what I'm saying, because I can't justify that. Thank you.
Scott, we're going to give you a flagship school. You've got to maintain it.
Mike will not comment until the last comments. I'll wait for the vote and then when I hear the vote, I'll kind of deal with it.
I have a question.
Michelle, you know, if you have a long call, right?
Mayor Leguilon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanella. Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Tymon.
Yes.
Councilor Tudy.
Yes.
Councilor Wannan.
Yes.
Councilor Boog.
No.
No.
Councilor Leachell.
Yes.
I would just like to say one thing, unfortunately Lou could not be with us here tonight, but we all know how Lou feels about this. And I know it doesn't count, but I think on behalf of myself and other members of the council, I would like to vote yes for Lou, because that was his wish.
Councilor Patanoster.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I'm not sure that really should be part of the public vote. I mean, it can be in the record, but I'm not sure that should actually be tallied as part of the vote.
No, no, it's not.
Michael, do you want to speak now?
Yeah, we got a public comment coming out about the show. Go ahead.
Oh, we're speaking, oh.
Yeah.
Is that my Jew?
Oh, sorry, good, yeah.
I'd like to thank the council, as we know, this has been a very long process that's been talked about for, for a very long time, just been a lot of hard work. I want to thank the add-out committee, our representatives who were there, who put the time in to come out and listen and vote and do their homework, and the standers here tonight as well. I thank you on behalf of the Board of Education, my administrative team, my board members, all of the families, but most important, the over 1,700 students in this town that will have the opportunity over the next several years to build a state-of-the-art high school that will truly represent your values of education, your commitment to giving them every advantage that every other community affords their children, and that's really powerful, it's a strong statement, and I sincerely appreciate your vote of confidence because we're in that, we're moving forward. So, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
I was told to trust the process, and I'm a little emotional because I have a child, I have a child in the hospital, and I see these children all the time, and they are so brokenhearted right now because of COVID and all the things that have been taken away from them. So you're talking about $40 a month, but you are giving kids hope, you're giving them a safe place, and you're giving them trust in adults again. These kids didn't have a voice, we are their voice, so I'm just going to give you a human face and thank you, and for those of you that told me to trust the process, I like the new design, and I like the new diligence even better than when we voted the first time, so I'm super happy that I went this route, even if it was a little painful in the beginning, and I really like the town council, because I think our relationship has really been improving over the last year or so, just with the many projects, so thank you, and I'm sorry I'm not as composed as I should be, but I really do appreciate all of your efforts.
Thanks, sure.
Yeah, sure.
First of all, I want to thank you that, I grew up in town, I'm proud of this town, and I want to thank my parents because in the 60s, they took on and added tax bill to build a high school for me, and I'm a senior citizen now, and I'm willing to put $500, $600 in here into our kids, and I think there's a lot of other senior citizens that are willing to do that, that are on this campus than I am.
That's good, Sean. Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say thank you, I can't wait to get home and tell my kids that they're getting a new high school, I know it's going to be ecstatic, I just wanted to say thank you, I know it wasn't the best decision, but it's very much appreciated that you guys, you know, are doing what's best for our community, our kids, and our society, so thank you, thank you guys.
I would like to say thank you as well as a citizen, as an educator in the building. One of the things I say to my kids at the beginning of the year when I first meet new students, I tell them how proud I am to live in this community and how cool it is, because your parents grew up here, they may have gone out in the world and gone to college or worked or wherever elsewhere, but they come back here and raise their families, and that says a lot about the community, and I tell them this, and I'm something I'm very proud of as a parent and as an educator in the system and as a citizen, so thank you very much for doing this.
As long as we're going on the road, I'll say thank you. And I went to town a long time, my children, all three of my children went from Stanley Tea and Norfolk Intermediate to North Branford and to the high school, and now my grandchildren here, and this is what we want, we want people to move into town, raise their families, hopefully their children will stay here, or their grandchildren. So all three of my kids went through it, now my grandchildren are going through it. Thank you very much, I know you guys put in a lot of work, as well as the architect and Neil Shaw and the rest of the board of events, Scott, thank you very much, I appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
Thanks, man.
I got to say, I spoke to Rusty tonight, and we were impressed with his last design, and he said, his newer design, he knew better.
You, we got the principal, the student principal back there at the high school, you guys happy?
Absolutely, I'd like to echo everything that's been said, I've been up here for two decades now, and so I'm a little short for words, I'm really, I wasn't sure how things are going to unfold, and I know it's been a long process. Mike was, was a part of the process when he got the drawing open, and I'll tell you this, other schools, when they designed their schools, when they looked at their audit, they are auditorium, they didn't work David Day when they built them a high school, they can't believe how old their auditorium is, so I guarantee you we're going to take care of the building, because we're going to take care of it, just like it took care of the audit tournaments that have opened since 2003.
It's very important to me and the host of the family to ensure that we also, on the council, I've been to the show quite a few times, I know that in the last few years, and I couldn't believe the condition it was in, when I came in there, I had a new bathroom, just a minute back, I couldn't believe the way it was, it was a terrible mess. I think I see these kids, having to use that bathroom is a shame, it's a shame, anybody else came to the building and saw the condition that it was in, it's awful. So, like I said before, I'm concerned about the kids and going to the school, I don't have any work, if I did, I'd be in trouble, but I don't have any more kids in the school, but whatever, whatever children are going to the school, they need a good place to go. So I just, I just hope it's maintained, I hope it lasts for a long time, because people are going to be chasing me around here if, if that doesn't happen, so that's up to you guys. Everybody else? Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Yeah.